Is this ready? Do we have a quorum, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have minutes of the 4th of December and executive session of the 11th.
Hold them for a second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved, open the public meeting. First item on the agenda this evening is LTAP presentation, Mr. Bob McCullough.
Thank you. The program manager at LTAP was a parent of a university student. For your own, I've had board for the last four years, also I have the other one. Board is directed by us and our team. So, I'm here tonight to hopefully recognize Rob Roberts, been on our board for the last 12 years, 21 years here as a street commissioner. Thank you. Thank you for coming and presenting that.
Congratulations, Rob. Okay, next on the agenda is strategic plan, mission values, mission vision values, and we have three members of the steering committee with us this evening to go through that, as well as Courtney Zog, the consultant.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
So, members of the town council, thank you for the opportunity and time this evening to give you a quick update as to where we stand. Probably at least since September, there's been a board of about 13 members working with Veritas to work on the development of Town of Danville's strategic plan. My name is Matt Browning, I represent Hendrick's Regional Health, I'm an administrator of our team, I know Dr. Tracy Schaefer's with me, and Jeff Piffkin, and a couple others in the back, I'll let them introduce themselves in a moment. Our task is twofold tonight, we want to update you as to where we stand progress-wise, talking about the results of a brainstorming session we've had around developing a formal mission, vision, and values for the town of Danville. And not only beyond that, we would like to submit that to you for your feedback and input, as well as talk to you about why we find, as business owners and business leaders within this town, this is so important. From a personal standpoint, one of my roles that I play at the hospital is in charge of development of our strategic plan. And I can tell you that it is an instrument that we use to define our organizational culture. And culture is incredibly important for two primary reasons at the hospital. Number one, it defines who we are, and number two, it makes us an attractive place to work. And that's why we believe so strongly, and I believe so much, in this particular effort. So, with that being said, I believe in your packet, you do have a one-page summary right here, and I don't know if, Dr. Schaefer, if you wanted to talk about mission vision values, you want me to read those, or?
Right.
All right. But again, 13 members of this committee have brainstormed over multiple meetings since September, but we wanted to present basically a rough draft of a mission statement, a vision statement, and some values for your consideration, not necessarily a motion for adoption tonight, but at least getting it in front of you and for town feedback in the future, and I know Veritas will have some more information about that shortly. Our proposed mission statement is, "The mission of the Town of Danville is to proactively plan for future growth, to enhance our authentic hometown, and to unite the community." We propose that the vision statement of the town become, "The Town of Danville is committed to sustaining its hometown heritage while advancing its inviting quality of life." And we believe that the town will continue to be governed by a set of values, there's five in total, visionary, which means leadership, planning, and collaboration, excellence, which means professionalism, quality of service, and continuous improvement, integrity, fiscal responsibility, ethics, and fairness, transparency, open and honest communication, and last but not least, authentic, hometown atmosphere, and commitment." So, Dr. Schaefer, I know you have a couple points you want to make, so.
I would just want the council to be aware that, as we're looking back, we've been working on this process now for approximately three months, and there's been a good deal of vetting, public input towards this process, and a lot of good counsel from Veritas, and our steering committee has been doing a lot of vetting with the ideas that have been brought forth for our mission, our vision, our core values. And again, just emphasizing that mission is what we do, and as we look at the town, and look at this movement moving forward, we want that to be about what we do as a town, as a community. And our vision to be that picture of success, what do we ultimately want to get accomplished, and what do we want that to look like as a community? And thirdly, our values, and Matt has went through those very succinctly, we want to think about those values, what we hold dear. And those are the things that have surfaced, again, through a lot of conversation, a lot of input, and again, very well vetted, I think, and again, we're bringing those forward tonight for your consideration. And I don't know, Jeff, or any other members of the council, whether you'd have any comments that you would like to share as well?
Really, the only thing I would add is, this type of work adds to what my team and myself, we look to these to govern what we try to bring to this community, and what you are actually looking for, so it's very, very important for us in the work that we do.
Just wanted to add a few more things. We met today with the steering committee to review the first draft of the economic analysis. I'll save you details for now, but we'll be revising that and updating it for public release and for you to see by January 8th. We also have completed four focus groups, individual interviews, and a web survey. That web survey closed about a week, over a week ago, but I wanted to emphasize that those results are all confidential. So just also with the focus groups and individual interviews, we collect that information, but that information does not have anyone's name attached to it, and no one else in the community, whether it's council, of course, or administration, sees those results. We will be compiling and aggregating that information, also for distribution in January. We also plan, once we collect both the economic analysis information and this web survey information, we'll be hosting a public meeting for their input, to get your reaction to some of, some high-level recommendations. That'll happen probably end of January, maybe, maybe early February, and then we'll start drafting the plan for completion late February, early March. Happy to take any questions, too.
Any questions for any of the steering committee? Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have SRO contract follow-up. We asked Dr. Schaefer to come tonight because there were some questions on, at the last meeting regarding the SRO contract, what constituted that contract, and so we've asked Dr. Schaefer to come tonight and just kind of give us the high points of it and be here for any questions that you might have.
And I feel like I was just here.
Yeah, I think you were.
Well, as Mrs. Lynch said, I'm here, I was just asked to provide some school district perspective, answer some questions the council may have, or may not have, in regard to our joint SRO school resource officer agreement. Here to do that, and would be happy to answer any questions that I'm able to appropriately answer for you at this time. And just a few things I wanted to point out, that, and I'm very pleased to say this, we have the best SRO situation that we've had, I believe. Our current situation is very similar to me, to a situation I had in a previous district. Had a gentleman there who eventually became the chief of the city police there, and went on to, actually, he heads security now for Parkview Regional Hospitals up there, and just really did a professional quality job, and that's what I was accustomed to coming here. I felt like our situation now certainly rivals the situation we had there. Our school district, as you probably are aware, partners to pay 50% of the overall cost, this year picking up the benefits in addition to half the salary, half the benefits in addition to half the salary. We feel that we get that value, and probably more, due to our officers' personal additional presence, many evenings, weekends, et cetera. We're pleased with that. We've had few, if any, complaints concerning the SRO at the school level. I can only think of one, and once I reviewed that situation, found out really it was a situation of our own internal coverage versus any police or officer issue there. I've been asked about workdays and vacation days. Our employees that work year-round, 260 days, in the district do work and can take their vacation during the school year, that was a question I had asked on a number of occasions. Sometimes during breaks, and sometimes during actual school days, our regular employees may take vacation during any of those times. We don't limit that for our employees. Again, the SRO is a town employee, we do understand that relationship can be a bit different as well. I've been asked about reviewing the job description. I have done that on my own, and on the district's behalf, and personally, I don't see a need from our perspective to make changes to the job description, but if the council as a body feels that we need to review it, we are certainly willing to do that, it is a partnership agreement. But it just don't, I don't feel a compelling need at this time to need to do that. And if that's, I understand we have a relationship here, school, town, we may have different interests or different needs within that that revolve around either the school or the town, certainly that. So, again, if the council as a group felt like that was something to do, as a school corporation, we're certainly going to be helpful and willing in that kind of process. But from our perspective only, things are going very well. Happy to answer any questions that you might have beyond that.
Is the SRO, is he in full uniform, or is he kind of a sport model?
Oh, no.
I mean, is he casual?
That's a great question, and I've seen it done different ways. Ours is in full uniform when he's on duty, yes.
And do the kids know who he is?
Yes.
And do you ever have lectures with him, or do you, about, in case there was a problem, terrorist or something like that?
Yes.
Do you guys go over any kind of drills like that?
Yes, he's an instrumental part of our district-level safety team. We've put in a complete new school safety plan this year, and we're throughout the year training on, he's been an instrumental part of getting that accomplished.
You feel the kids are comfortable with him there?
Yes.
Good. And you lock your front door all the time?
We do. Except for my door, our doors are unlocked, the rest of them are locked.
So that's good to hear.
Any other questions? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, next is revised 2017 holiday resolution 17, 2017. Jenny?
This is just to change our holiday luncheon date to, from last Thursday to this Thursday, December 21st.
We would need a motion to approve that change.
You're moved.
Or your second. We have a motion and a second to amend resolution 17, 2017, or I guess it's a new resolution, isn't it?
Revised.
Revised, okay. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you. Okay, next is the 2018 salary ordinance, ordinance 25, 2017. Jenny?
So this includes a 3% raise for all town employees. Chief Rainey and I also met about the parking violation officer, and we have increased that salary, the hourly rate. That is not an account that is governed by the State Board of Accounts because it's revised as a cash account, because it's revenue in and revenue out for our parking. So Chief Rainey and I compared to other communities what a parking violations officer, and that position was, the pay was low, so we did increase that. Will, the same thing for the parks department, he is adding a part-time recreation coordinator that's going to be paid out of the non-reverting account. So those are the three changes, and then, of course, there was the changes with the fire department, and I gave you guys a new copy tonight. I had the reimbursement incorrect for center township on, they will be, the assistant fire chief will be reimbursed at 100%, and as well as the new full-time division chief will be reimbursed from center township at 100% for the training chief.
Any questions for Jenny on the salary ordinance? We will need to suspend the rules to act upon.
Or if you guys don't want to suspend the rules tonight, we can revisit it at the December 26th, or yeah.
We'll have to figure out a date.
Right.
What's the wishes of the council?
I think it's a good idea.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules to act on ordinance 25, 2017. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. All right, rules have been suspended. Undertake a motion to approve the ordinance.
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we approve and adopt ordinance 2017, an ordinance establishing 2018 salaries and other compensation for our employees and employees of Towne.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve and adopt ordinance 25, 2017, the 2018 salary ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. It is approved. Thank you.
Let me ask a question. Do we ever consider giving longevity to people that work for the town? Anybody ever thought, could he pay? Yeah. Do other cities give their employees longevity?
We do have a type of longevity after 15 years, I believe you get your birthday as a day off, and then after 20 years, you get birthday and your anniversary. Two ways they can get it.
That's what they get, I'm just talking about.
That's a good point to look at, Tom, I think we need to look at that a little bit better, to do a little bit more, because most of our employees have been here for a long time.
Yeah, you know, percentage extra, 20 years.
I think I was hearing Tom saying he was going to volunteer to investigate that and bring back the findings to us. Thank you, Tom.
That's what I heard.
I get my wallet out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the host future fund board of finance. Jenny?
So this is a board that the previous clerk treasurer had established, and I brought back this year. Marcia's on the board, Brandon Lawson, Jim Phillips, and Tony Hamlin serve on the board. I would like to make this board a paid position for each meeting that they attend, for each board member, other than, of course, Marcia and myself will not get paid. So what I'm proposing is that each board member, the three, would be paid $75 a meeting, which is consistent with how we handle our other boards, but we can't, because this is the host fund, pay it out of salary and wages, because when the host policy was established years and years ago, it was determined that salary and wages would not be paid from this fund. I have found out that we can treat them as consultants and pay from the host professional services. So I'm proposing to you guys that we do that. We have five meetings this year, they spent, all of them spent a tremendous amount of time researching, we have moved those funds from PNC to Huntington this year, and they just spent a lot of their own time, and plus the meetings that we did have this year. So, moving forward, I'd like to pay them $75 for each meeting that we have, that they attend, you only would, of course, be paid if you attend. And so, since we're five meetings this year, it would be the $350 for each member that attended the meetings, and then subtract what they didn't attend. I'm sorry, there's some.
They have no questions.
Consistent with what we do with other boards.
Right.
Across the board. I'll make that as a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve payments of consulting fees to the host fund board of finance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
No, because it's the consulting fee versus, not an ordinance. It's not an ordinance.
Good, thank you.
All right, next, I see that there's a meeting date calendar in the packet, is that something you're going to talk about in your remarks?
Just included that for you, for your reference. Meeting date scheduled, a couple of Tuesdays coming up.
What do you want to do about next week?
We do have to have a final meeting, so. What day is available for everybody?
Busy Tuesday afternoon.
Busy Monday.
What time would we want to have this meeting?
We're tied at noon before 2:00. I think I'll make it.
How much time will you need, Jenny, to be how late in the week?
Oh, Tuesday or after is good for me.
Give enough time to get a lunch. Them deer will still be there.
What in the morning?
Actually, whatever's convenient for you guys, I can do too, I don't know what about.
Are you okay with that, Dennis?
It's fine.
Schedule it for 2:00 this day. Is that okay with you, Laura?
It's this coming Wednesday.
Not this coming Wednesday.
A week from.
A week from Wednesday. Okay, and schedule a work study.
We're all going to be here, sure. We're all going to be here.
That sounds good.
But I would like to check.
Mm-hmm.
But I would suggest, that last meeting is, that's 15, five minutes.
2:15.
2:15 on the 27th, unless problematic, because I really would like Jim to be there, but that may. Have a garage door break. Will, don't you have a garage door down here? Dex? You sure? Because that way we could get Jim here. It's going to cost us, you know, 75 bucks for a house call, but we will get him here.
Send him a text, we'll see. As soon as we know whether Jim's available or not, it's a problem.
Because we have to advertise it, correct? All right, department head reports. Water.
Not the only thing I have is, we met Ken Elliott from Banning Engineering this, last week, discussed putting together the plans and specs for the tank at North Elementary for this next spring. So hopefully, we'll have everything ready to go in January, be able to solicit price quotes. Talking to Kent, we should be under the threshold that we'll not have to go to bid, so we can solicit three reputable dealers that will take care of our tank for us. And then when we get that, we're planning on probably soon as school is out in May, and finish before school's back in, out to North Elementary. That way we don't have anything. That's all I have? Any questions? Yes, sir.
Have we tore down the standpipe yet?
No, it's still there.
Ready, we'll have a barbecue, do it.
You bring home food.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. That metal won't burn very well.
The barbecue, the hamburgers will.
Oh, okay, there you go. No, that later, we'll discuss later's council's wishes, what we want to do with that tank, and at your leisure.
Any other questions for Jimmy?
Yeah, any more? That's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Laura?
Okay.
Fire Department, Chief Morgan.
Couple of months ago, I reported to the council that I had been asked to continue service on the Ames Public Policy Safety, or Public Safety Policy Committee. Earlier this month, I was asked to be chairman of that committee, as a result that has granted me a seat on their board of directors as a non-voting member. I'm hoping this will be a benefit to the town with my involvement in that agency. So, other than that, I have nothing else to report, and would entertain any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for?
The flu?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Waste water, Gary.
I just have a couple items concerning citizens' issues, customers. The first one being the Danville Friends Church, they're located near 200 East and Old 36. Their pump system failed, so they're wanting to convert to gravity through the fairgrounds to connect in with our main, and they're going to pay for all the labor for that project to extend our main east of 200 East, and we're going to supply the structures and pipes. A very good project for the town, where we get free labor to install sewers. So that sets a structure for future development. The second is, we sent out our sewer use ordinance flyer, and we did identify a few houses that have gutters and sump pumps tied into us that we're going to work on separating. That's all I've got.
Are you talking about going east?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
From the fairgrounds, just across 200.
Thank you.
Not a very big project.
Questions for Gary? Thank you.
Thank you.
Formwire.
Good to see everybody again. Sorry I haven't been here for the last couple of meetings, but I had a little issue with my health, so, but I'm all better and back to normal if that's what normal's called. But I have, I'm going to take a second and thank Rob Roberts for all the help he's given me the first three years I was here, I know he's not going to be down there in that position at the first year, and I just want to say thanks, Rob. We've always had our differences, but every, every time he's helped me out, he's been there for me, so I appreciate that. Thanks again. Now, I have, I've got a couple months' worth of building permits to give you, but it's been kind of slow, so it won't be that long. We've had five single-family residential, those are new single families. We've had five single-family residential, those are new single families. Four of them were Four Oaks, one was in Wexford. We've had two remodels, four sheds, two fence permits, 16 roof permits, one electrical, and Four Oaks Section 4 is pretty much complete. I don't know where we are in the recording stage, but they're ready to go there in, did I skip you, or? Section 5, they just brought in Section 5, all the department heads are reviewing those. So they're moving along pretty good. And then there's some work to be done at Town Hall. We have new windows coming in on the west end, on the gymnasium coming in. Hopefully, they'll be in here in January. The best time of the year would be having doors open, so we got to it as soon as we could. The chiller will be shut down. We saved about $1,200 over three months by shutting down the boiler in the summer. So if we can do that same thing over the winter months, we're getting to it a little bit late, but we didn't have a choice because there was other issues wrong with the chiller that we had to crack first. So hopefully, if we can save another $1,200, that pretty much pays for the maintenance, well, half of the maintenance for the year on both. So it kind of pays for itself by doing that. We have some more repairs on the locks to do. We're going away from keys, we're going to put all keypads in year by year. It'll save a little bit of time and effort. It might be a five-year process because they are expensive, but it's better for, in the park situation, when we're letting in people in the building necessarily unmanned, we can account for who's here, what time they're here, what day they're here. So it gives a lot of security to the building. Stormwater's kind of small list. We had one repair just a couple of weeks ago down on South Kentucky Street. It was kind of a patch job. I don't believe in patch jobs. I only do one thing, one way, and that's the right way, but we had to do it that way just for the snowplows. It was driven over by a vehicle and collapsed in, but there's going to be a lot of work done hopefully this summer from Kentucky at Marion all the way down to, almost to Lincoln Street. So a lot of work to be done there. And that's pretty much all I have. I am too. It was brutal.
I don't think any better.
Hey, Park.
You have your council report in front of you there. So Winterland's doing really great this year. We started off a little slow, but we're picking back up. We had some little minor setback in traffic a weekend ago, but last weekend, we took care of that, and this weekend, we have plans for it too. So everything's going good there. Our park board retreat, probably one of the best park board retreats I've been to since I've been here. Really excited. We have a big projects list, and we're working on prioritizing what we're doing, and then we want to show the public, you know, these are the things that we're working on and we're working towards. So I'm really excited about that. Thanks, Kent, too, for being there for me and understanding all my crazy ideas. Then also, we've been working on a landscaping plan for Aiken Park. It's kind of, you know, there's no trees or really anything besides the border trees there. So we just got that plan in, we're reviewing it right now, but it's going to look really cool for the future. We'll probably do most of the plannings ourselves to save a lot of money, but now we have the plan, so it's easier to plant trees and go out and get trees and stuff when we have the plan together. So then, one other thing, the amphitheater was struck by a tree. In its last week, it was up. It's done, currently, the quote is around like $30,000 worth of damage. So we're looking at different options with the amphitheater. We may just replace it, you know, fix it as it is, or we may look towards what the future may be. So look for that probably the next meeting. I'll have to make some sort of call on that, so just kind of giving you a heads up on that. And then last thing is, thanks to Rob, for sure. I mean, everything he does is very important to the park's success, and we don't get where we are without Rob taking care of us, so I really appreciate that. Also, on a Winterland note, thank you to Chief Rainey as well. He's kind of been the guard guarding the money as it comes up, and it's just those little things that make me so glad to have other department heads. You know, we kind of take care of each other, and, you know, it's important, makes the team stronger. So I just appreciate them.
Looks like you've added to the Christmas lights in that this year. Did you add to the Christmas?
Yeah, we added a few displays. We also did something kind of weird with some cups and spelled stuff in the fence, and it turned out really cool the 20th.
It really is nice.
And then we kind of moved everything around. You know, it's hard when you have mostly the same stuff to keep it new and different, but we do a pretty good job of it. Hopefully, from this year, some of those dollars will go to a nice, big display in the future.
Thank you, it's very nice.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Will? Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works.
Just information I received from the Hendricks County Highway. The 19th, 20th, and 21st, they'll be doing tree removal on Cartersburg Road between 200 South and the railroad bridge. So they will have that road shut down during the day. It will be open to emergency vehicles, and it will be closed to the public, so just so the council's aware of that. The final walkthrough for the roundabout was completed, and I have the information here for the council. What do you guys think? The final walk-through? Items will need to be reviewed? One last thing I have. We received notice of a small structure replacement on US 36 between the Dollar Store and Clear Creek Entrance. It's a small box culvert the state's going to be replacing. I met with them, with NDOT officials over the summer, to review this project. I did request that sidewalks be put in during this construction, and from the entrance to Clear Creek back to the structure, they do not have enough right-of-way in there to do that. On the east end of the project, from the structure to the Dollar Store, they will have to remove some of the existing sidewalk, but they will replace that, and they're going to try to put a sidewalk over the structure itself, and then we can pick up and put the sidewalk in from the structure back to the west to Clear Creek. And they're going to obtain some temporary right-of-way. They're going to deter traffic around that. So there will be a temporary road on the north side of that structure, so they'll have to get some temporary right-of-way. They're going to start letting this project 4/11 of 2018, and with the start date sometime in May. And the start date will be building the temporary runaround. So I just wanted to let the council be aware of that. And that's all I have to report this evening.
Any questions for Rob?
I'd like to say that 10 years, 10-plus years I've been on here and dealing with you, 20-plus years being a citizen of Danville, you've had your job as superintendent of public work. You've done a great job. As a council member, I've always felt you over-communicated, which is great. I've never felt like I needed to know anything because you've always made me aware, and you've done a great job.
Thank you.
And good luck.
All right, thank you.
Chief Rainey.
Presenting council members, I'd like to direct your attention to page two of the statistical report for the month of November 2017. If you go down about three-quarters of the way down the page on the left-hand column, you'll see a column for traffic stops. For the month of November, our officers conducted 384 traffic stops. That's 195 more traffic stops in the average month in 2016. And within the traffic stops, especially the last, it seems like, the last two or three months, we have made several drug arrests, as well as collected a lot of criminal element suspect information from these arrests. The next column I want to talk about is total runs or total calls. That's 790 for the month. That's 64 more than the average monthly 2016. Criminal arrest was 30. That's five over the monthly average. Traffic arrest was 14. That's six over the average. Our OWIs was two. That's low for us, and it's not due to lack of effort from our officers. I'm hoping people are, at least in the month of November, obeyed the laws and didn't drink and drive, but that's about a half of a point less than our normal monthly average for Again, it was a busy month for our guys. They had some training in emergency driving, as well as physical tactics. On top of that, I was invited to a few events throughout the month. One of them was the Central Indiana Police Foundation Thanksgiving Breakfast with a cop at the Colts Pavilion. It was an event for corporate leaders and communicators to say thank you to the invited police officers that was there. I felt privileged to be asked to attend that. Also got to attend the Gala for Hendricks Regional Health. They're in their new hospital facility there in Brownsburg. Attended the Danville Chamber of Commerce Community Awards Night, as well as during that month, I got to speak on a topic about courage for Coach Kaylee Mays' senior class. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Chief Rainey?
Thank you.
Want me to go to the public first?
No, I can do that now. So just a couple items I wanted to bring to your attention. Endeavor is actually working on their project on Lincoln Street to extend fiber for their own backbone, coming from the west side of the county and then connecting down Lincoln Street to the substation at Tennessee. So they're a little bit ahead of schedule, so that's great, and they'll be hitting the ground running so that they can connect a community in the future, hopefully this spring. And they are still working on engineering for the entire town. So in terms of that rollout, fiber to the curb is in our future, so looking forward to that. Also wanted to let you know that boards and application, or boards and commission applications are still available, and we'll still be collecting those until December 22nd. This Friday is the deadline to submit those. We've already had quite a few come in already, so hopefully you'll have a good group of people to select for those appointments. And then lastly, just want to thank you all for your support and patience as we all support Gary and work through his absence, and here he's doing much better today, so I meant to call him today and I didn't have the opportunity because I wanted to give you an update. Tom, did you talk to him?
When's he coming back?
I'm not sure. I have not heard. I know he's had a lot of visitors and guests, if there's anybody here that knows.
Gary.
So he's a little bit ahead of schedule. Last I heard, it was the 29th, so that's great news. So we'll look forward to seeing him at his party on Thursday.
Is there any wishes to be heard from the public? All right. Ginny?
Couple of things. Number one, I did have the opportunity to talk to Gary this afternoon. Hello, Gary. Glad I'm not his nurse or his doctor because he's a terrible patient. He's looking forward to getting back and swinging things. Rob, thank you very much for all your service. Works. Done a phenomenal job. Out of my freezer. And lastly, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a New Year, hoping 2018 is a productive and fruitful year for everybody.
I have a couple things to add to Laura's comments about Endeavor. I spoke with Jay Watkins at the Economic Development Partnership's Christmas Open House. They had set a minimum, it wasn't to complete the project from New Winchester, but it was kind of what their target was, and they have surpassed that target. So I think that's encouraging for what our future will bring for that, so I'm excited about that. I, too, want to congratulate Rob. In my tenure as town council, you've been a great public works superintendent. There was never a question that you did a great job there, and I appreciate it. And two, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and hope that you get to enjoy it with your loved ones and enjoy the day. That claim docket.
Move to approve.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Claim docket's approved. Meeting's adjourned.